All right, looks like we have everyone, so let's go ahead and I believe we have Chief Henson on here as well.
Yeah, I'm here.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. All right, well, go ahead.
Well, this is more, um, I don't, I don't know why I'm on this honestly, but I think Todd's the one that put together this packet. And Mark, I think has been involved in it. And of course, I've been involved in it because of the jail cameras, but. So I don't know, uh, the, the packets proposal from the camera people. Uh, that do our maintenance and service and basically they've told us that the cameras are no longer serviceable and they're outdated and they're. There, there's no parts for them anymore. And so the whole camera system, jail security, uh, camera system needs to be upgraded. Um, and, uh, and then there's a bunch of places in the jail that don't have cameras that. Uh, we thought would be beneficial to have cameras. And so there's a, there's another bid for the additional cameras too. So, oh, there's Todd right there. He's on, so Todd, what do you, Todd, Mark, what do you guys have to say about it?
Um, from a technical standpoint, yeah, uh, we, we had a failure a couple of months ago of one of the DVRs in there. Um, that took out sixteen cameras. We were able to get it back up and running, let our vendor know they replaced the device with a. A device they had on the shelf for backup. Um, when they went to replace their backup device, that's when they learned that it's no longer available. So at this point, we have no safety net. And if we lose another device, it's, it's down.
Which would be very, very bad.
That would be bad.
Okay. Although it's a lot of money, I don't see where there is an option, uh, and to include, uh, the. Additional cameras. Reason why I say that is I have a feeling, and I'll ask you, Chief, you're asking for these because it puts them in a position to better, uh. Take care of and watch our inmates and also our, our corrections officers to make sure that they're in a safe position that can get backup.
Yes, for sure. There's a, there's so many, there's been so many times we've had situations that have developed. Like in the hallways around the courtroom where there is no camera. Um, and we go back to, you know, look at a fight or look at, you know, we think an inmate has something on him and there's just no way to go back and look. There's no camera in those areas. So. That's why we've asked for the additional cameras is to provide better coverage.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? Comments?
Where would we take the money out of?
Jen? Question of the day.
Well, I have no problem taking it out of general fund, but if we also could take it out of REIT or any other ones I'd like to hear.
So this would be eligible for REIT, but I believe that all the REIT funding has been spoken for at this time, so.
And she's froze.
She froze.
I agree with her. I thought it was already spoken for too. So I, I'm supportive of taking it out of general fund, uh, any fund balance.
Same with me. Good to move forward.
Yep, as am I. I think we need to, to upgrade and get, get, get the new system while we can.
Yep.
For sure. Thanks Commissioners. We really appreciate your support.
Yep. And thank you also to you and IT.
So just to, just to kind of talk a little bit about why this is brought before the Commission today. Um, it's, it's because we were adding those additional new locations to it. And so I just wanted to make sure that the Commissioners were aware. That this just wasn't a replacement of the existing system. Uh, this was adding an additional nineteen new cameras. And so it sounds like. We're all good with that and it's going to be, you know, close to, to three hundred thousand dollars probably. Um, I did talk with, uh. TJ about, uh, utilizing this company and, and we kind of have to utilize this sole source contract. And it's because. The integration, so the cameras and those things that are there are things that we could purchase off the shelf potentially. But the integration with the, with the, um, command or control center within the jail, that's the proprietary part that needs to go through them. So. Is that correct, TJ?
That is, yeah, they wrote custom software that, uh, integrates the cameras, the doors, as well as the, the audio controls in the jail. I'm all tied into one unit, so they're the experts in it.
Jennifer, did we miss anything?
Well, I was just gonna say there could possibly be some, um, ARPA money left over that we could pay for this with.
So maybe you can take a look and then come back with, with. Or, you know, or, or just talk to, talk to us to let us know. I mean, I think either way, I think we're, we're all in agreement that. This is something that we need to do and figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah, um, we're actually preparing an ARPA update for Monday's briefing right now. So, um, we can talk about that along with, I mean, we've had, had several different, um, project ideas. For remaining ARPA funds or ARPA funds that are turned back. So, um, so it's just one, one possibility we can look at for funding.
Sounds good.
So I say we, we go ahead and it sounds like we've received approval from the board to move forward. Uh, so let's go ahead and move forward with it and then specific funding identification. Um, we can wrap that up, Jen, if, if you want to keep this on your list of items to kind of wrap up. Uh, let's keep that on that list. So, uh, if, if it's possible to use other sources, then we can, uh, but knowing that it's something that we, we definitely want to move forward with now.
Okay, so use our, or use, um, general fund if, if ARPA doesn't, uh.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause we could always do a reversal out of the general fund. We could, um, pay for it out of there. If the ARPA is approved, we can transfer it over to ARPA.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mark or, uh, Todd, I assume one of you guys will be signing the contract with the vendor.
I would assume probably Mark, you want to sign. I have a copy of the contract I can give you.
Okay, thanks you guys.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief. All right. Well, let's move on to Support Services, Mark.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm gonna turn it back over to Jen to talk about, uh, twenty twenty-four IT rates.
Yeah, so we have, um, the twenty twenty-four revised IT rates. Um, we had, uh, presented these back in June. At one point two, three million for twenty twenty-four and, um. Since then, the audit, or I'm sorry, the IT Steering Committee met and, um. Proposed moving Munis to the cloud for storage instead of, um, on our own servers. And that's an annual cost of approximately fifty thousand, maybe a little bit less. And, um, TJ can talk about the benefits of doing that. Um. And then there's also, um, switches that we need to replace. And I believe the life cycle for those is, um. Ultimately going to be six years, but, um. We wanted to, TJ wanted to jumpstart that replacement because they're so old right now to do, um. Three-year replacements at first. And so that's a, an annual cost of about twenty thousand dollars. Um, so we are proposing. Increasing the IT rates to one point three million instead of one point two, three million for twenty twenty-four.
No, Commissioner, you're muted.
He doesn't have to explain it to me. I'm comfortable with it completely, uh, uh, and as for the rates, we, the way we handle our budget, uh, it will just be a maintenance increase anyway. So it's not gonna. Have an overall effect unless all of a sudden we do something completely different and decide not to give people maintenance. Uh, this isn't gonna have an effect on any of them. So. I'm comfortable.
Commissioner Shu.
I'm comfortable too.
Well, he is on the committee.
I had to remember if I was comfortable then.
Yeah.
You were.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, so next I've got Mary to give the Commissioners an update on her progress of her strategic plan in HR.
Morning. So, I just wanted to, I have committed to quarterly coming in front of the Commissioners and giving an update on HR's strategic plan. So this will be our second quarter update. Um, and just a reminder that, uh, HR's mission is to develop and manage people first. Human resources policies, programs, and provide expert consultation services and solutions in an efficient and customer-focused manner. And to provide our employees and volunteers with what they need to provide services to the public. And our strategic plan is what's helping drive us forward so that we can measure progress. To meet our organizational goals. So in your packet, um, we had broken down our strategic plan into some separate areas. Um, and in light of time, I'll just focus on our second quarter update. Um, we've been able to get two more contracts done. Our FSA program was completed and implemented June first of twenty twenty-three. Open enrollment for the entire year of twenty-four will be in the fall when we do all our other medical. Open enrollment time, hoping a bunch of people take advantage of that. For recruitment and hiring, we got NeoGov up and running, fully implemented, very excited about that. We've seen, uh, some anecdotal, uh. Evidence of an increased talent pool and the quality of applicants. Um, once this program's been up and running for a few months, I'll be able to have. Concrete statistical data to show about where we're at, time to hire by department. Um, you know, what's our demographic looking like as we move people through that kind of thing? Uh, there's just not enough there yet, but so far hearing really good things. We've been to three recruiting events. We're gonna be at Allen Days on July fifteenth, so come see us. We have a booth set up. We'll be doing some recruiting that day. We are LinkedIn followers, we're up to two hundred and seventy-one. We have thirty-nine hundred Facebook followers. We started our Instagram account. We've got seventy-five followers so far. And the really big one I wanted to talk about was our internship program in Public Works. So we had three interns start. Um, they'll be with us through August up at Public Works. They're gonna be rotating through some different areas with a focus on engineering. Really excited to pilot this type of program and tap into a new talent, uh, pool. Hopefully people will want to be. Um, wanting to stay or be with the county after this type of experience and, um, education. We're also working on not only some on-the-job training, but they're also getting professional development through human resources. So we'll be. Spending time with them on Mondays. We'll be doing some legal and effective inter, or excuse me. How to interview well, how to write a resume. We will be getting them, uh, hopefully fighter certified, CPR first aid certified. So they'll be walking out of here with some tangible, um, tools and resources. So there's a, you know, return on investment for the intern as well as the county. Pretty excited about that. And I've had other departments reach out and say, we're watching, we want to see how this goes. We might want to do an internship program. So I think that's a really good talent pipeline for us to focus on. Um, removed the technology barrier for the application process, so we don't have to print, sign, scan. That's really good, using NeoGov. For learning and development, we had a supervisor bootcamp on May sixteenth. Class was completely full. Uh, verbal SWAT on May seventeenth was also full, really good training that is brought to us, uh, by the risk pool. And helping, you know, mitigate, uh, our risk appetite when it comes to supervisory issues, uh, grievances, employee performance, all those things. Uh, we're really excited about the possibility of moving more of our HR functions into Munis. We, uh, went to a position control. Training, which is again based on the chart of accounts, which we're pretty excited about. Once position control is done and the chart of accounts is done, we can. Start utilizing way more functionality in Munis when it comes to HR. So we're really excited about that gearing up and getting retrained on everything. It's been a couple of years, so that we're ready. Um, we conducted our second employee town hall on May thirty-first. Uh, Commissioner Trask hosted that for us. Thank you very much. Commissioner Netherland, I think you're next, so we'll have to get you scheduled for third quarter.
Unless one of the other Commissioners would happily like to do it. I, I have no problem with keeping my face up.
I think you're next, though. They already went.
Yeah, do they like it? They like it?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have a choice, Commissioner Netherland.
I think they had fun. Uh, let's see, uh, HR employees have really been getting out in the field and, uh, going on seeing what it is our employees do. I think it gives us a really good perspective on. You know, the demographics of not only the people that are in these positions, but the positions in the work themselves. It helps us be more. Uh, employee focused, gives us a better perspective at the table when we're bargaining. Uh, when we're going through any other employee development or performance management processes. So we've been out with, uh, the roads crew, transfer station, been at the jail. Um, I think we've got another roads crew one planned, so trying to get out and, and be more in the field. I have a request into the treasurer's office to see if I can go spend some time up there. I did time elections. So I think it's been really good and just getting some face time with employees and, um. You know, it's very interesting, all the work that we do in Mason County. I love it. And then we've had, um, I only did one update personnel policies in the second quarter, believe it or not. I know, but narrowing it down a little bit, so you don't have to read four hundred pages every other week. So. Um, that's kind of just a snapshot of where we're at as a department and our strategic plans. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns about where we're at?
Just a comment. Great job.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment too. And I'm, I'm really excited about the intern program. Um. I, I think there is room to continue to grow that and it's great to hear that we were actually able to get. A couple of interns for the summer. So I, I think, I think really the, the sky's the limit for it and. Hopefully it's a success and other offices want to participate. I think it'd be great if we found some. Plural interns for our office and things like that too. I think, I think we can be a leader in that for the county.
Yep, thank you for everything you're doing there, Mary. You're doing an incredible job. So just know that you're very much appreciated.
Thank you. All my team, my team Gotham. I think I have the best department in the county. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, so next item on our list is our North Mason, uh, Fire Authority lease. So long time coming. Sorry it took so long, but, uh, I feel like we've. Come to an agreement. The only, the only, um, thing that I, that I potentially would like to change, and I'd, I'd like to talk to the board about that is, uh. Currently with the proposal was a ten-year lease, but I believe that they would actually be interested in, in going as high as a twenty-year lease. So. If you guys would be comfortable with me negotiating that with Bo and, and his Commissioners, um, then. We definitely would move forward on that. We've made a lot of progress on, um, how we're gonna transition our North Mason Sheriff's Office into that building and. And Kelly and his team, um, have, have met with the Sheriff's Office as well as Commissioner Netherland and. Feel like we have a good plan to move forward. So everybody's happy and, and willing to accept, uh, the proposals that are out there and. And it's a, it's a, it's a good solution. So love to see us, uh, be able to move forward on that and. And, uh, what this would do is, is give me the approval to, to go ahead and enter into this lease, uh, with the North Mason Fire Authority.
Mark, uh, for the other Commissioners, I was the one that asked for the twenty-year when we were talking, walking away and he said, yes. I just read it though, uh, just so you know, if it does become a problem because they have to go back to their commission to do all that, uh, there is a five-year.
Extension.
Extension. Already built into this one. So a happy medium. So I'd like to see it done sooner rather than later, but if, uh. If it's not an issue, I'd rather do a twenty. Personally, but if it is an issue, I'm comfortable with, uh, the ten and five.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Yep, so do I.
Great, thank you. All right, um. Mackenzie, were you gonna present the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees, or is that something you'd like me to do?
It's up to you. I can or you can.
Go for it.
Um, so previously the Commission asked for a little bit more information regarding the composition of the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. So I did reach out to staff over there and they gave me a little bit more information. I did provide the bylaws in the packet. Um, the bylaws were just revised June twenty-first, so I will send the updated bylaws to you. Um, I also asked them. About the two at-large positions that have typically been filled, um, by appointments from Lewis and Thurston County. Uh, staff over there looked back through history and there's no set information on why. That's just how it's been.
Yeah, I was looking at that traditionally. That's not a, no bylaws, but it's in the bylaws. That makes no sense.
Yeah, I believe that verbiage traditionally is in the bylaws.
Yes, it is. That's what I meant. It's in the bylaws, but you don't put. Uh, verbiage that traditionally have been filled by appointment in the bylaws. That's. That means, that's not saying that they are. That's saying that traditionally they did. There's a, a bylaw is what will, shall. And must happen. So I'd like to, for us to request at least appointment from, from all of the counties or something.
Maybe have three members, member-at-large positions. One from each county.
I'm good with that too. But for that, for that, you would definitely have to change the bylaws to do that. But how these are appointed, that's not an actual rule. That's just a statement. So they don't have the authority. They don't have the, there is nothing written that gives them the, the power. Commissioner Shuji challenged us or asked this question. A little bit ago, and I'm just backing up after what I see. It was right to have been questioned or challenged because that's not. An automatic assumption they get to do it because it's in the bylaws that traditionally it has. So therefore it should follow the regular. Appointment.
Would you like me to reach out to TRL and see if. They can expand that to where the members at large can be from any county, or are you wanting to have, uh, five additional, well, three additional member-at-large positions for each?
I prefer three additional at-larges, was recommended by Commissioner Trask. But I'm, I'm comfortable with the other two, so. I'm curious what Commissioner, uh, Shuji's thinking though.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, I, I think it's a weird way to go about things, um, on their part. I could, if, if you're gonna say it's traditionally held by those two counties that just. Be clear and say that those two counties get two seats. Don't call them at-large because it, it's not. That's not a, um, I don't think that's an accurate present, presentation of the board seats. Um. So yeah, I mean, I'd be open to expanding that, um, you know, to open it up so that, you know, there's. The additional at-large seats. I, I mean, I guess at that point, that board gets pretty unwieldy, I would imagine. So I, but I, there has to be a way to either. Truly make these at-large positions so that the other three counties have an opportunity to place. Individuals in there, in those seats, whether that's on a rotation or, or something along those lines. Um, but I, I just. In its current form, I'm not comfortable with how that, how that's being executed.
And I think it is the execution of it, Commissioner, because this is not. An, uh, an applicable bylaw statement. So therefore we should have been voting on it the whole time.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, I can't remember if they had brought forward the at-large positions and then we just had to confirm them. Or, or how that happened. I don't, I don't remember, but I, I do think that we need more representation from. Or equal representation, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could, you know, I could see if it was based on. If there are other metrics, if it was based on population or how many branches, uh, you know, were, you know, of TRL were in your county or, or some other. Um, you know, some other way to kind of determine what the representation is on that board, but. You know, I mean, I, I would imagine that, uh, if we had a conversation with Pacific and Grace Harbor counties, that they might feel the same way in terms of, uh, you know, having. Uh, you know, being part of a group with unequal representation. Um. It makes sense to have Thurston with two seats on there because they're the by far largest county on the board. Um, you know, so I, I certainly don't have an issue with that, but I, I think. You know, when you look at the breakdown, uh, to just historically go by, well, we give. This at-large position of Lewis doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I don't understand why if there was a, you know. They could have moved the current at-large member from Lewis County into the, into the full-term seat. And then had a, had a discussion about how to approach the, um, the at-large positions, but it, it appears that they're gonna allow that seat to hold and then. Appoint to the, um. To the Lewis County specific seat. So I, I think there needs to be a little bit more discussion and evaluation of this.
Well, and I want to point out that it's actually in the bylaws how it's to be handled. Uh, and with some added verbiage, which is not appropriate. A board of seven trustees shall be appointed. By a joint action of the Board of County Commissioners of Grace Harbor, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston Counties. That's the rule. Two at-large positions traditionally have been filled by appointment. So now there's five counties. And they're talking about seven. So the seven trustees shall be appointed by joint action of the Board of County Commissioners. That's the shall. So it should never have been an appointment processed by the other. Because that's just a comment. Have traditionally been filled. That's a comment. That's not a, that's not a bylaw regulation rule, uh. Anything.
Mark, you're gonna say something?
I just was thinking that, 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 and I believe it's what Commissioner Netherland just said, so I just wanted to confirm. Is that, that the two additional at-large positions are the only two, those, those, it's like Lewis and Thurston get another. Swing at the, at the plate, right? So, um. That, that's how I read that to be. So we actually, by joint approval. We each get to represent, have a representative from each one of our counties there. And then two at-large positions in addition to the five would be appointed by Thurston and Lewis.
No, but what the actual bylaw says is not that. The bylaws strictly say, a board of seven trustees shall be appointed by a joint action. Of the Board of County Commissioners of Grays, uh, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston. The other one is just a statement that the two at-large members have traditionally. That's not a rule. That's a comment. So each time, the, the two at-large should have been, uh, voted on by all of us that are in there now, according to the bylaws that they're operating under. So if they didn't do that, they were in, in error for not doing it, just because somebody said that somewhere doesn't. And, and you included it in there as verbiage does not mean that's the rule. The rule is simple. A board of seven trustees shall be appointed by the joint action of the, of the Boards of County Commissioners.
Yep. Yep. We can definitely provide that feedback to, back to Timberland Regional Library and, and, uh, and get their comments.
And I think it's more than feedback and more for comment. That is the rule. We can talk with our attorneys, but that, it's gonna hold up. That's the rule.
Yep.
And why did they do it opposite of that? Because it had been historically one? Okay, that's their argument, but the rule says you vote, that we vote and we must vote on them.
I believe that the two member-at-large positions did come before us in the same process that the, that all of them go through. Um, I can definitely double check our agendas, um, but I do believe that both the member-at-large positions followed the same process as the other five positions.
And then unless it says something different, then we can put somebody up from ours for the at-large when they're open.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's more my point is, you know. How are we, when are we notified about the at-large positions and, and how's that process work? Cause I, I don't, all the time. Where, where we've had a, a chance to nominate someone for the at-large position. Um, and we've done a couple of appointments to this board, yeah, during my tenure. So I think that's my only concern. It's, um, I trust that we've been. We've been approving or concurring on these appointments throughout, but my, my issue is, you know, the sort of the. Having a more equal representation or equal shot at, at soliciting representation for Mason County to participate on the board.
Okay, I'll reach back out to them. How would you like to proceed with the appointment of Brian Mickey?
Is that for the vacant position for Lewis?
Yeah, is that for their vacant or is that, uh, at-large?
Uh, that's for the vacant position for Lewis County.
Yeah, I have no issue, uh, concurring with that appointment.
Right, nor do I.
Okay.
And the same here, but before we move forward, Commissioners, in reading the bylaws, I want to point something out. There was an RCW, uh, under section four removal. RCW twenty-seven point two point one nine oh. A trustee may be removed for just cause by the joint action of the Boards of County Commissioners, Grace Harbor, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston Counties. After county commissioners have received a written complaint regarding the trustee, a public hearing will be scheduled. The trustee must be notified at least fifteen days. We received one a while back, two years ago, and it was. We received one a while back, two years ago, and it was sent to everybody, but there was never a hearing. Conducted. I just wanted to point that out. If you remember, two years ago, we had that come before us and it was sent. Uh, but we didn't know that a hearing was required, and this is required by law surprisingly. This is not their bylaws. This is per R C W two seven point two point one nine zero. So. They did not follow the law. Unless. There it was presented in a way that was different than what it would was appeared to have been presented to us, but I think it was sent to sent to all of them at the time. I'm pretty sure it was if I remember the C C from the emails and stuff.
I don't even remember that one, but um.
Uh, the um um, what's her name? Um.
Carol.
Who?
Cheryl.
Yes. No, Brenda.
Oh, Brenda.
Oh.
So I just wanted to point that out that there there should have been a process according to this bylaw, which I'd never seen before, so. I think it's late now, but they need to make sure that they follow the the law. The R C W is not. To be considered. It is. To be followed.
So do we approve their bylaws? Do they come before us for review and then approval?
I do not believe so. I believe it only goes through their board.
Yeah, I don't see a signature.
So I guess guidance is um. Reach out to them regarding the at-large positions and to let them know that we concur on their the appointment.
Okay.
So at the very end, it does it does list the dates um that it was approved by the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees.
Yeah, I don't have that on mine, but.
Uh, so last one was April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Was the last revision. I just don't know what changes occurred.
And we need to find out, though, whether that's uh. Unallowed. Uh duty. Where did they get the authority to change the bylaws? So. Cause that it would make sense that if we are the sanctioning bodies, that it would come to us.
All right, so. Moving forward again. Just do a little bit more research, maybe give us some more answers on at our next briefing and. And then we'll. Go from there.
All right, I'll do my best.
All right, thanks, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
All right, so go ahead and turn it over to Community Development now, Kel.
Yeah, I don't I don't believe we have any Commissioner calendar updates because we just did that, so we should be good to go.
Well, I apologize.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, got a couple items. First one is some code changes. So um Public Works, as you may or may not know, I think you guys probably do that they're updating road standards uh countywide. And so uh that impacted some of our Title sixteen and Title seventeen. Um, and so we. Made amendments to those to coordinate. Basically, we're kind of stripping the road standards. Any road standards we've had in Title seventeen and sixteen and saying. Look to the county road standards, which will be put in Title twelve. Um, and then in addition to that, we made some, we did a few housekeeping items within Title sixteen and seventeen as well. So um. For the road standards, again, it's a lot of deletions. Uh, with some just quick references to to the new Title twelve. And. I'm scrolling slowly here because if I go too fast, I it won't show up on my screen. Um, but if you if anybody has any. Questions regarding trying to get to the. The non-road standard pieces, the housekeeping items. Okay. So for the housekeeping items, we've made some changes to cottage industries. So cottage industries are small businesses that are. Run out of someone's um residence. And so we do allow a variety of things within um a residence. You have to meet certain criteria. If you go above the criteria, you could get a a special use permit. Go through the public hearing process. Perhaps, you know, you're drawing additional traffic or things like that. But then we have a list of things that are prohibited. So under no circumstance can you have an airport in your backyard. Um, or an automobile sales or a a variety of other things. And so we've. We've included campgrounds um as a uh specifically prohibited. As well as recreational storage, so like storage of um RVs and boats. So that. Those are things that tend to come up on people's residents and they want they want to run those things as a cottage industry and we don't think that's appropriate. So we've added it to the prohibited pro prohibited list. And if they are still folks interested in doing those things, they can seek a rezone um for a more appropriate um. Way to go about running that type of business. And of course, reasons go through the Planning Commission and then the board.
Yeah, this doesn't affect any actual zoning except for the cottage industry. You could still have this and this and mixed use of this and this and uh. Commercial, but. Uh, just not cottage industry, which is.
The residential zones, yeah, yep. And then in rural commercial two, um, that's a zone that we allow self-storage. So self self-storage units are allowed with a special use permit in that zone. Um. But in the building regulations within that, there's a it talks about the the maximum size of a building and it's really. Pretty restrictive when it. If you are gonna have a a self-storage units, um, the restriction is pretty small. So we've just. We've just went ahead and said, hey, if you do go, if you're going to do the special. Use permit for a self-storage, the size limitation will be addressed within that process rather than putting a hard. Um, cap on um the size of building. So that's just kind of cleaning up because it was a little bit conflicting there. Um. And then for rural commercial three, uh in addition to self-storage being allowed with a special use permit. We went ahead and allowed recreational storage. That is same as a self-storage. You know, it's uh. But typically the recreational storage of RV or boat um can be covered or uncovered, but it's not within the. Uh, foresighted structure. And we often get inquiries uh regarding that. And then lastly, in the marijuana section, um. We clarified some language um. That regarding uh indoor. Uh, indoor producers in rural residential two point five. And rural residential five zones. Um, they are required to get a special use permit. And they have to be on at least five acres or larger. And then um. If you're in the rural residential ten and twenty, you don't need the special use permit. You still have to be indoor. Um, but anyway, there was some conflicting language and we cleaned that up um. Based on the intent from previous uh when these uh regulations went into place. And. Oh, I do have, sorry. I forgot there were some Title sixteen housekeeping items as well. Really simple ones, just uh updating kind of the um. The procedures. And then um in title or section sixteen point four zero point zero four one. Uh, we added uh. A section regard under the boundary line adjustments that unless you already have a legal, non-conforming lot lot. Lot size um. You are otherwise, you cannot create a lot that's less than two acres in size or really according to the zoning, which in residential. Zones, it's typically no less than two acres. But if if you're in a residential zone and you already have. A parcel that's less than the two acre minimum, we consider that legally non-conforming lot size. Will still allow you to do a boundary line adjustment. You just can't make it anymore non-conforming. And that's already listed out in the procedures under Title seventeen. But this without saying unless already legally non-conforming, it bounds us to not be able to do boundary line adjustments for lots under two acres. So um we're just cleaning that language up. And that's it. There's any questions? Otherwise, I will. Oh, and and all of this briefing, of course, is to put it on the action agenda. Um. To set a public hearing. Um, I can't remember my dates, but to set the public hearing um for the board to consider these amendments. Um. Believe in August.
So on that non-conforming, that's the way it's kind of always been. But let me see if I understand. Does it change anything with this? Let's just say somebody has a. Uh, it's an R five and somebody has a four acre parcel. Somebody had they also own a three acre parcel. And uh one acre parcel. Uh, all of them are non-conforming, but they want to add on to the three acre parcel. Uh, currently, they are allowed to do that because they are non-conforming already and it doesn't change it. If it was five point two five acres, it could not go below five.
So um, this is a little bit odd. Or not odd, just not intuitive. So in the rural residential five zone. Um, the density is one unit per five acres. But if you um have a ten acre lot and you want to subdivide it, you can do that into two lots. With one being as no smaller than two acres. So you could do a two acre and an eight acre. And then, of course, in the future, say, ten years goes by, you have an eight acre. You can't. You could no longer subdivide that. So it, you know, you wouldn't get in a situation where you thought, oh, I just want a five acre and then this three acre. You can't do that. You'd need the ten. So you can have a two or an eight or any kind of, you know, variation in between. Uh, three and seven, you know, of course.
But could you could you go back and change the two to three out of the eight? That's what's allowed now.
Yes, so the situation that we're fixing on by adding that language is we've always allowed boundary line adjustments. Um, between lots and even if they're smaller than that two acre minimum. Um, but and but you can't make it any smaller than. So let's say you have a one and a half acre and a one acre and you're doing a boundary line adjustment. You can't um, you can't make one larger and one smaller. They're both already legal, non-conforming for that. Two acre minimum. So you still have to result in the same size parcels. It could just be reconfigured. However, we've recently been called out that because that code section. States that you have to, you cannot do a boundary line adjustment um for lots. It how is it worded? Um. Boundary line adjustments in residentially zoned property must meet the requirements of minimum and maximum lot sizes. A set forth in Title seventeen. So if you go to Title seventeen, it will say your R R five minimum lot size is two acres. So someone's called us out that you can't do a boundary line adjustment for lots under two acres. And that is not our intent and we have the authority to do so under state law. And so we're just adding this language in unless already legally non-conforming. Um, because we've historically always done boundary line adjustments um. To lots that are less than two acres. We just can't make them more non-conforming. That makes sense.
Yeah, except for it does make it and historically it was allowed. For example, you'd have that four acre parcel. You have the. Uh, the two acre uh two acre parcel. If you made that one two and a half, that brings the other one down to three and a half. But that was.
That's not non-conforming because the zone allows you to have as minimum of two acres. So the three acre is a is a legal conforming lot size. It ju- it can't be subdivided any further, but it's as far as lot sizes go, it's conforming to the zone. As opposed to a one acre site, that's less than the two acre minimum. So that's considered legal, non-conforming lot size. And we have historically processed boundary line adjustments for lots like that. Um, but we just have recently been challenged that this particular code section would not allow us to do that. And so.
We should fix that then because we've historically been doing that. I want to make sure we can still continue to do that.
Well, we we do have a um uh. Um. A challenge in in a Lupa case, Lupa appeal. And so there's a hearing scheduled for. It gets more complicated because it's something that could have been done through a parcel combination. So. Either way, we can the particular law um property owner will end up being able to do what they want to do, but the. The challenge nonetheless highlighted a. Um, a piece of code that technically would prevent us from doing a boundary line adjustment for lots less than two acres in size. In the residentially zoned pro uh properties.
Well, and for the Commissioners, we have a lot of properties. Well, and Kevin was on the planning commission, so I'm sure he's aware of this. We have a lot of properties that. Uh, uh, our R five zone was dropped over the top of half acre parcels, quarter acre parcels. And sometimes there's a property line dispute between them and they need to make a property line adjustment. Uh, to fix that or they want to give up uh their driveway so they don't have that battle or whatever. I just want to make sure they can still do that because that's extremely important.
That's exactly, yeah, that's exactly why we're adding in unless already legally non-conforming. Because we want to continue to be able to do those boundary line adjustments like we always have. It's just that this particular piece technically would not allow us to. We are, we do have a a challenge. Uh, in Superior Court and. We're just putting this language in to clarify so that someone in the future won't challenge on this particular issue because. Like you said, there are.
A lot of.
An enormous number of lots that are under the two acre size in the R R five zone. So, you know, around every water body in this in the county for the most part.
Thank you, Kel.
Yeah. Yeah, so that that was it.
Looks good to me. So you'll let us know when the hearing will be scheduled.
Yeah, I had it on my um. Sorry, my pages aren't loading, so I can't really see the packet and I'm trying to be paperless, so I don't um. But uh.
You can borrow some of my paper, Kel.
I know Mackenzie, Mackenzie's on top of it. So um. Yeah, we'll. Thank you. The hearing for August fifteenth.
All right, sounds good. So this will be on our next agenda to schedule the hearing.
Yeah. And now Marissa.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. I have two items for you. They are related. Um, I'll start with the um letter of support. From all of you. Um, so we are currently applying to the Washington State Department of Commerce. For grant money to uh. Work on the twenty twenty-five uh comprehensive plan update. Um, so I'm working on the application, but the other part of the application is a letter so of support for the work from. From the Commissioners. Um, and I did submit a a letter for you guys to look over. Um, and I'm hoping to get that placed on the July eighteenth uh meeting to be signed. Um, by you all. If there's any language, though, that you would like me to change. Or you have any comments, uh, please let me know.
Looks good to me.
I'm supportive.
I am as well.
Okay, all right, then I will move on to the next item, which is um the R F P um that. Uh, we put out for consultants to um. To work on the comprehensive plan update. Uh, we only received one uh proposal. It sounds like a lot of other counties are kind of having the same um. Same uh. Thing too happening where there's only one or no submittals, but we did get one submittal and that is from S C J Alliance. Um, the their proposal was in the packet for you to look over. Um, so right now we are hoping um, that we can get the blessing of the commissioners to go ahead and work on the contract with them. So, and start the ne- negotiations with them. But if you have any comments on that or any questions?
Anybody notice the young man who worked with us through all those other projects on the park and ride is not on that paper?
He is not.
Sorry, I was gonna say I'm, I'm good moving forward with SCJ.
As am I.
Yep, me too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Kel?
All right, Kel. Thank you. I just sent your response to your email. If you want to give me a call on Friday afternoon, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to Public Works, Loretta.
Just to, just to give the commissioners a quick update, I just got a message from um, John Taylor that Hillary Franz is going to actually be giving a live update at eleven thirty on Como Four um, out at McEwen Prairie and where McEwen Prairie and Mason Lake Road intersect, so.
At eleven thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Commissioners. First up, we have a news release uh, that we would like to share about our annual chip seal and striping projects. And Mike can tell you a little bit more about that.
I was doing really good. Um, Mason County Public Works would like to notify motorists that the annual construction chip seal program and the annual uh, restriping projects will be in progress during the months of July and August. And so every year we uh, let people know uh, that we're going to be striping. We have a list on the website for the uh, striping miles and for the chip seal uh, miles. Um, so anybody wants to visit the site, they can, they can get that. Just be patient with us and quit driving in the paint.
Yes, please.
That's about it.
That is about it. Thank you, Mike. All right, next up, Commissioners, we have um, an action item requesting that you authorize the director, me, to execute the latecomers agreement between the county and Harbor Custom Development Incorporated. And this is to um, collect fees to reimburse Harbor for their construction of the Belfair Sewer Trunk Line.
How much is the fee?
So the fee um, and that'll come in the, the next agreement, Commissioner. This is simply saying that we are agreeing to collect reimbursement. And the fee itself uh, will be just under five hundred dollars. Around four seventy some dollars.
Yeah, but they didn't include, I wish they'd included in the latecomer agreement, but.
Yeah, that, so well, there will be an amendment that shows what the actual fee is for reimbursement. And then we will have a calculation of our updated CFC as well.
Issue I have is, why, it doesn't make any sense for us to sign something that we're going to, that we know we're going to be amending and to sign something that uh, that allows us to collect the fee without knowing what the fee is in what our agreement is.
Well, that's the latecomer process um, that's laid out under statute, that you enter into the agreement. You say that we're agreeable to collecting this latecomer fee, and then it is amended to collect the, the actual amount.
Okay, if you say it's required, it makes, but a lot of things in government make no sense.
I know. I would like to do a one-two and just get it done, and I'm sure Harbor would as well.
All right, sounds good to me.
We'll follow the law.
They've been good partners.
They have, absolutely. Yeah, and making great headway up there on the, the project, so um, lots of activity, as you know. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next up, a couple of discussion items, if I can get back to my agenda here. We have the, an upcoming, so Crabbe has been uh, scheduling a couple of meetings out and about in the various counties. And they are planning to have a meeting up in Bremerton. And I would like to find out if Commissioners or Mark, who, who would like to attend? And um, so that we can get back the confirmation with the, the Crabbe folks.
What day is that? Thursday the twenty-seventh?
Hmm, let's see, let me get to that real quick. So yes, Thursday the twenty-seventh, that's correct. And it starts at one, oh, excuse me. Thursday and, yeah, oh, Friday is the following day, but Thursday is the presentation by the, the county. So Thursday at one o'clock.
If nobody else wants to go, I would do it. Uh, it's up there close to me, so that's why I was offering my services. I actually go to dinner at Anthony's.
I was gonna say, there's dinner at Anthony's.
So I'm, I'm used to that one. But if somebody else is dying to do it, I have no problem not.
You know, Commissioner, I would say have fun at, at this meeting.
All right.
And in, in Loretta, it looks like Mike is going to be given an overview and, and project, some presentations on our projects.
That is correct.
And it starts at one?
It is, yep, one o'clock.
Now, you only need me Thursday, you don't need me Friday, or you don't need me Thursday and Friday?
Um, Friday, I think, is primarily board business, so the uh, executive director's report. So Jane will talk about strategic planning, other activities, legislative priorities. And then um, the deputy director Drew Woods will be talking, providing an engineering division report. Um, wrap up on budget, current budget and supplemental requests. And I'll be an IT update. And Axel Swanson will be providing a, a WASEs update as well. So optional on that one.
Okay, we'll see how it goes and if, if you need me, I'll make myself available.
All right.
We'll find something else to do.
More exciting things. Okay, and then next, um, Mike has a temporary road closure and culvert removal discussion to share.
So on uh, Beeville Loop Road, that's out uh, uh, by Matlock. At Monopole five point one nine, there is a corrugated metal pipe that is in a failed uh, situation. It's exceeded the design life and it's lost its structural integrity. If you can look at a couple of the photographs. These photographs do not do it justice, let me tell you. It's uh, it's in worse shape than, than what it appears. It's also scoured on both ends underneath it about twelve to fifteen feet. And so we're, we're really worried that it isn't going to make another winter. And so what we'd like to do is go ahead and just take the, the culvert out and close the, this section of the road. This section of the road has about twenty-two vehicles per day. Um, it's actually a redundant road. There's actually three roads into the area. So there's the, the the uh, the residents will still have two other ways to get in and out, uh, so it's not going to negatively affect them. The immediate property owners is uh, Green Diamond, so they, they won't be affected by uh, closing this access either. We don't have any funds for this project uh, or to replace this um, or look at it, but uh, the Chehalis River Basin, uh, Trout Unlimited actually is recently, as in like last week or so, has secured a grant to actually do a study on replacing it. Not actually the construction of it, but a study to uh, look at what type of uh, structure it would have to be. It would have to be a bridge. So it's, it's uh, you know, we're talking about a couple million dollars um, in, in actual replacement. So right now, we'd like to just go ahead and take it out and close that section of the road and, and make sure everybody's going to be safe this winter. Any thoughts?
Yeah, who's uh, who's uh, just.
That'd be me.
That's Commissioner Shutis.
I was gonna say, because I don't know it at all, uh. Are you good with closing that down, Kevin?
Yeah, I think given that there's the, the safety concern as well as having another route out. The low travel, I think, I think we have to prioritize the safety in that situation.
Then I will support.
That culvert looks huge. I mean, to, to see the, the, it's like the little tiny figure in front of the, the culvert.
Wait till you see how big it is going to have to be to replace it.
That little tiny figure is Jeremy.
What's even more amazing is the amount of cover on that squash pipe. And then earlier, Mark was commenting on my art hanging in the window. He says, what is that? Well, it's a chunk of this culvert. Mike's always bringing treasures in from the field.
It takes, it takes a long time for, for metal to weather like that, so.
Yeah, it will actually, if you go inside of it uh, right now, it's, it's a, it's actually quite a view of of what sand and water can do because it's actually removed the nuts off of some of the bolts. That's just, it's just wore it down and the, and the bottom of the surface downstairs is, is so thin that you can just take a, a, a pointed hammer and just tap into it, punch holes into it. It's, 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 it's seen its lifetime, so.
Mike, did you say how old you think this one is?
Uh, we're, we're guessing that it was stuck in the ground probably in the, in the sixties or fifties maybe even. I mean, being, being a galvanized uh, metal, uh, a protection around here is not a good thing because it, it's really abrasive soil and, and with the water. And so it just, yeah, wore it off pretty quickly, but it's impressive the amount of material it's moved.
Try to give those folks as much notice as possible, please.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Uh, Commissioners, and then I apologize, I skipped over the, the Russell Wood Homeowners Association meeting. I know Commissioner Netherton, you noted that under board calendars and agenda activities. Um, I am not able to attend this meeting. And so I'm proposing setting up another time to talk about the, the utility rates. But I have a um, a memorial service that I need to attend, that it's, it's at the same time.
Well, they're probably going to want to be talking about that water. I, I, actually, I should have shared it with the commission. It happened to get out there, the water that is so So maybe you should be there for that, but if you don't, if they can't just give you a new one, I will attend with him and I'll take that on.
Yeah, and we'll get you so, uh, an update on that um, here shortly, Commissioner. We've got, made some great strides in that arena. And we'll get that to the Homeowners Association as well.
I actually, uh, I actually had the opportunity to talk with Richard, um. I was out at the Public Works on Friday and, and he was, he had the, the old plans out for Russell Wood and he was kind of going through them and looking at the how the system was set up and, and how you could isolate each individual tank and and kind of researching opportunities to, to look at, why do we, I think we actually chlorinate a bit of that water now. It's not mandatory that we do, uh, we just did for safety purposes, but uh, the interesting part of that discussion was when you chlorinate the water, it takes the liquid iron and magnesium that's currently in liquid form and actually turns it into a solid. And so he feels like there may be quite a bit of sediment at the bottom of our holding tanks. Um, he appeared that he was able to uh, isolate those tanks and so we could isolate one tank, clean out one, and then isolate the other. And the only time that we actually see sediment in the water that actually gets to our, our customers is when there's a, a large usage. And so they had filled up a water tank or something that he was, he was, he was assuming might have caused that disrupt, disruption of that sediment. And so it, it, he had, he definitely had a plan for it and uh, had called some people out to do some testing to verify his, his uh, theory is correct.
Yeah, and the other thing to add to that, Mark, thank you. That's a perfect capture of that conversation. Um, the other thing to add is that we confirmed Richard contacted the State Department of Health engineer and um, confirmed that we do not have mandatory chlorination of the water system. And so our operators have been um, we've met with the operators, Richard instructed them to back off on the amount of chlorine. So there's been process changes to the chlorination as well. So that the chlorine residual is much less than what the community has been experiencing. So um, those are, those are the things that we've got in play right now.
But before we leave that one, Commissioners, we've been through this one quite a few times over the years. And the quality of the water that comes out by our mistake are whatever we're doing is third world quality water that's looking with a color that, that they can't even wash their clothes. It's so bad. We've all looked at it before and we have decided in the past, we weren't going to let this happen again, but it keeps happening. At one point, we even talked about drilling a new well that we thought we had handled. We can't keep doing this to these people. And if we need to drill that new well, we need to drill a new well because we can't come back to them in six months and say, oh, sorry, it happened again. Oh, sorry, it happened again. At some point, we pass that. And I think at the point, we had a, a survey that showed that so many of those people were doing bottled water years ago. And we promised them that we would fix these things and we haven't. At some point, it just cannot be allowed anymore. We have to consider doing whatever it takes to fix this and not just keep relying on, well, this will be the issue or that will be the issue. We need to maybe consider fixing it because uh, I'll share the pictures with uh, Mark and he can share them with you. These last ones were as bad as any of them years ago. And if it was your water and your family, you would be disgusted. And this is our plan. So I just wanted to hit up on that.
Appreciate that. I'd like to hear, you know, what uh, um, Richard has planned. Um, I kind of got a snippet of it, but maybe Richard can come and, and talk to us on Monday and give us a, a um, a more detailed, better um, report.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, because I agree. We need to get this fixed so it doesn't happen.
And we want to be mindful about making sure that we are um, spending those funds in the best possible way for the solution. So it's, um, it can be very, very costly. And we're grateful for our legislature to um, help fund those improvements as well, so.
Yep, for sure.
Yep. All right, that is about it that I have, Commissioners, and you can see the laundry list of upcoming events, which I know you're all aware of. And um, so that's, that's about it from Public Works. Oh, except Commissioner Shutey has something for us.
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, so well, two, two things. Um, first, there was a, an announcement that came out last week about um, some expanded federal funding um, for road projects. I know one is um, uh, the Rural Service Transportation Grant, uh, the other one is uh, uh, Infrastructure for Rebuilding America. And, and so just wanted to, to see, get your thoughts on what projects we might have on our um, annual or six-year that might be eligible for those fund sources to uh, to go after the dollars on that. And um, I know particularly up in Belfair and as well as um, you know, some maybe projects that we could do jointly with the city and the, in the UGA. Um, where it, the incorporated and unincorporated areas meet. Um, and, and maybe do a joint project. Um and and maybe do a joint project or application, so just wanted to kinda put that out there and and get some feedback on it. We start looking forward to doing projects.
Yeah, we've um taken a quick look at the turnaround time. The application appears, it's deceptively simple. It's a four pager, I think, for the most part. Um but like many of the federal grants, there's lots of fund strings attached. There is an obligation requirement that um we must obligate the funds by September twenty twenty-six, I believe, and that sounds like forever, right? But um if you're starting from ground zero and doing your preliminary planning, preliminary engineering, your permitting and NEPA and all those fun things, uh that can get chewed up fairly quickly. But we need to be mindful of that. Um and yes, we do have a laundry list of of projects, Commissioner Shudy, some of them um fairly big ticket items. We've got a couple of large bridge projects. We've got some things that may be DOT type projects, but are low on their priority list, but high on ours. Um an example might be, for example, the three hundred, SR three hundred relocation up in Belfair. We've got a variety of DOT state, state and county intersection improvements that could fit in this. Uh Mike's identified stretch. Um Chapman Cove, let's see, what else? We're looking at Tahuya, some very large bridge projects. What am I missing, Mike? You've got a whole laundry list.
Uh I mean, we could go to the big end on John's Prairie and and take that uh whole road down the hill realignment, regrade it, um replace the state bridge and install a roundabout. I mean, that's all one big uh large project. Uh McEwen Prairie can be connected up to and extended to Highway one oh one. That would uh help the traffic and connectivity there on this end of Mason Lake, and then on the other end is our old favorite uh uh Razor Road that could be extended all the way down to SR three. That's about uh two miles worth of work. That would be brand new road and such, so so yeah, we could do that. There's always the the old one we've been looking at, uh the front roads uh uh along uh SR one oh one, um basically from SR three down to Kamelchi area uh and getting local traffic off of there. Uh that's that's some of the type of the projects that were worded on this grant last year. So uh yeah, we have all kinds of those, and and the one we've been kicking around here uh recently is uh uh the Cool Qalam Road actually having onramps uh down onto one oh one would be a a a big improvement, so. So we're looking at some of the ones we have on our six-year plan and some that we've just kinda had out there, cause we've never really had this kinda money to throw at it, so um we'll look at a couple others.
Throw out there, Mike, this for a safety aspect on that Razor Road, remember that it was the fire department that said it could change the uh the uh response time from twenty-one minutes to seven.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know, there was quite a few other benefits, uh one for cleaning up the area, doing away with some of the other issues that we have in this county. That'd be nice to put a little sunlight on. Uh not politically correct, but sunlight diseffects and cockroaches hate sunlight.
That's a fact.
So will these, will this be brought up at the uh the TIP cap meeting?
Yeah, we'll have a preliminary uh uh to bring that up. Now, I don't know if we'll have all of the time to do this, but because I know that Phil is gonna be giving his presentation at the TIP cap meeting next week. So I just may have to wait, but we can't wait long because August uh twenty-first is is coming fast.
Yeah, so if there's a way to kinda, you know, concurrently have, you know, your maybe your top few projects for our consideration and and get that feedback, I think that'd be, that'd make sense from a timing perspective. You know, just kind of rate the take what you know about these programs and and kind of, you know, rate your rate your projects with what you think would be successful.
Yeah, we'll talk to Shelton, uh Jay from Shelton, uh City Shelton too, and and uh see what his uh his options would be and if there's something we can combine to, that'd be great.
Yeah, just uh it's a good chunk of change out there, and we'd like to bring as much of it to Mason County to help you do your work as we can.
Thank you.
Up updating our, Loretta and I've talked a little bit about um kind of revisiting our SEDS list and making sure that all of these projects are included on that SEDS list. It is kind of the laundry list that we keep, and so making sure that they're documented in there um is is in our best interest.
Yeah, great idea. Uh and then the other, the other thing that I had was just a, if you had a quick update on the rate study, just kinda where we're where we're at, if we're still tracking with the timeline that you provided a few weeks ago, and there are any changes that we should know about.
Yeah, we're um we're tracking, other than I think some additional outreach with the community commissioners. So we obviously need to talk um some more detail with our folks there at um at Russell Wood. We did have our Beards Cove meeting, we had a meeting with the folks in Lakeland Village. But we would be well served to set up a a broader meeting to capture the rest of the customers outside of Lakeland Village for our North Bay Utility. And we need to set up a meeting for the Belfair Sewer Utility. So that part's done. Um and then our rate analysis work, I would say, is largely complete. And Katrina is waiting for some feedback from myself and Richard to better dial in projections on future connections for all of the utilities, and the other item that she's looking for is updated connection fees for the all of the utilities. And other than that, we've got, she's built the the models to fiddle with. Um so we can have a sense of what things affect the rates in general. Um where and when we need to look at uh a change to our rate increases um. So yeah, for the most part, I would say that we are on track within about a week or so. Alright, do you have anything else for us?
Uh I just got one uh next week, uh the twelfth. Um David Smith and and Culver will be speaking at the Kiwanis Club Meeting, seven o'clock in the morning. And uh the road crews are out at Sunnyside, they're putting in the uh large culvert out there. And soon as we get that done, we'll start into our chip seal program, and uh Sunnyside will be the first road we'll we'll chip seal and take care of that. Uh if you wanna look at some other work they've done, they just completed work out on uh Grapeview Loop, uh the shoulder paving there. Did a really good job. Um they also did shoulder paving on Lynch Road uh down by the Boat Launch, and uh they're out there today out at Shelton Matlock, starting uh right by Highland uh Road and heading uh heading west, doing some shoulder work, so. Um soon as we get uh get that done, and then one more over on McCreevy Hill, and then we'll be back to chip sealing uh for the month of July.
And Mike, the the Kiwanis meeting is to give an update on the Harstein Island Bridge project, is that correct?
Yep, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's been quite the quite the project. Pretty exciting. When did they start the the actual sealing of the deck, Mike?
Uh that's, we're gonna find that out today. Twelve thirty, but it should be within the next couple of weeks, they'll be starting to put the overlay on the one side of the deck.
Okay, and then if I may, commissioners, do a quick, one more quick squeen squeen share, sorry, screen share.
Trying to figure out what you were saying.
I know Commissioner Netherland, you had had some calls, I believe, last week about traffic impacts that we're thinking had to do with the the fish barrier removal project on one oh six. And I'm simply sharing this for folks that um may be interested in just the project schedule and how to receive updates and alerts about the project. So this is if you just wanted to do a quick search of the SR one oh six fish barrier project. Um this'll just pop up a link, and uh you can see what their planned schedule is, um why they're doing the project, you can click on project timeline, um and also uh there's a link to be able to subscribe to alerts and updates on the project itself. And I know that doesn't necessarily help with the traffic impacts, but it certainly helps you think and plan ahead about what to expect.
Good information to to share with every everyone too, and then it also has the other projects too. You can type in DOT and find out what other projects they have going on also. Planning trips, that's a that's an amazing tool to use.
It is, absolutely, very helpful. Alright, that's it. Right, commissioners, do you have anything for Loretta?
Alright, Loretta, I'll get a hold of you one of these days, or let's go on a a road trip again, and we can see the amazing work done by our our folks out there.
Yeah, we're in, we'll full swing right now, and so there's a lot to take a look at, absolutely.
Definitely.
A lot of work to be proud of, for sure.
Oh, for sure. Tomorrow with the Public Works Board, I'll be touring a another wastewater treatment plant, and so they're interesting, but.
Richard can tell you.
Yes, he can.
He's very interested. Alright, thank you. Right, commissioners, that brings us to the end. Do we have anything that we need to discuss?
I don't think so, not for me.
Me either.
Alrighty.
Better try move, we adjourn.
Alright, we're adjourned.